We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngariya, wunaguru bangala miriya, yuradamelbu. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome everybody here tonight. In delivering the oath to Waila on behalf of elected members, we, the Waila council members, commit to serve the community of which we are a part and will work together diligently and collaboratively to create a prosperous future in which we all can share. I would ask those that can or are able to to stand for the obituary notices and then a moment's silence. Joy Nagle. Margaret Kelly. Jim Gardera. Louise Grimwaite. Natalie Formby. Calvin Holtz. Desmond Wren. Arthur Stone. Fay Angus. Anton Marinikovich. Margaret Gibbons. And Alex Anda Core. Thank you. Item four, our attendance record, we have no apologies, we have no leave of absence. Item five, council member and executive declarations, 5.1 conflicts of interest. Does anyone have a conflict of interest to declare? CEO?
Through the mayor, I confirm that I've got a material conflict of interest in relation to item 20.3.1 on tonight's agenda, which deals with the performance review and the employment contract for the office of the position of chief executive officer. I will vacate the chamber at the time that that matter is considered. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO. There are no further conflicts of interest. Item 5.2, gifts and benefits. Does anybody have a gift or benefit to declare? Deputy Mayor Pond?
I attended the business and tourism awards and was, I received a ticket on council sponsorship.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Border?
Like Deputy Mayor Pond, I attended the dinner as well with a part payment to council.
Thank you. Councillor Inglis?
Same as Deputy Mayor Pond.
Councillor Klobbika?
Same as Deputy Mayor Pond.
CEO?
Through the mayor, I confirm that I received a gift in the form of two tickets to the Baylo racing car event yesterday to attend the SA government's corporate box. I believe the value of that gift would have been approximately $300.
Thank you, CEO. I guess in hindsight, I should also declare a potential conflict of interest in attending the same dinner, although I was, I guess, speaking. But to ensure everything's squeaky clean, I will declare that as a conflict, as a gift. CEO?
Given the previous declarations, I'll also declare that I attended that same event paid for by council.
Okay. Item six, the minutes of the previous meeting, 6.1, confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on Monday, 21st of October. We'll take the minutes as read. We have a recommendation. Councillor Knox?
Moving.
Councillor Simpson?
Seconding.
There's no further comment. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Item 6.2, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday, 4th of November. Similarly, a recommendation, there, we'll take the minutes as read. Would somebody care to move? Councillor Todd, you're moving. And Deputy Mayor Pond, you're seconding?
Yes.
There's no further comment. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Item seven. Matters adjourned or laid on the table? We have none. Item eight, we have no deputations. Item nine, petitions? We have no petitions. Item 10, public question time. We do have some questions from a resident and we thank Ms. Sandra Salberry for her questions. Question one. Has the Waila City Council received the email from Mr. Russell Broadband, MP, Member for Monash, Portheadon Council, for the COVID vaccinations? Answer one, yes, council received the email on 8th of November 2024. Question two, what does the Waila City Council plan to do with information he has provided to you? Answer two, council has reviewed the information provided alongside advice from the Therapeutic Goods Administration, TGA, which addresses misinformation about DNA, mRNA, COVID-19 vaccines. At this stage, given the early nature of the information presented and the TGA's current guidance, administration has decided to maintain a watching brief and is not planning to take further action or disseminate additional information at this time. Question three, has the Waila City Council notified all people of concern who continue to administer these vaccines? Answer three, no formal notifications have been issued to individuals administering these vaccines as council awaits further developments or updated guidance from health authorities. Question four, why has the Waila City Council not acted to date upon the information received? Answer four refers to answer two, which is that council has reviewed the information provided alongside advice from the Therapeutic Goods Administration. At this stage, given the early nature of the information presented and the TGA's current guidance, administration has decided to maintain a watching brief and is not planning to take further action or disseminate additional information at this time. Question five, is the Waila City Council planning to do anything with the information received? And answer five is to refer to answer three, which is that no formal notifications have been issued to individuals administering these vaccines as council awaits further developments or updated guidance from health authorities. Thank you. Item 11, council members' activities. We have some that have been scrolled up on the screen. Quite an extensive list amongst members. Opportunity, a brief opportunity if any member wishes to elaborate on anything. Otherwise, we'll think everybody thought they had been doing since the last meeting. 12, item 12, presentations, we have nil. Item 13, committee reports, 13.1, the Mount Laura Homestead Advisory Group meeting on 8th of October. We have a recommendation there before I call for a mover. We'll take the report as read, whether there are any questions to take on board. Otherwise, I will call for a mover of the recommendation that council notes the minutes of the Mount Laura Homestead Advisory Group meeting held on Tuesday, 8th of October. Move, Councillor Border? Do I have a seconder? Seconder, Deputy Mayor Pond? If there are no further comments or questions, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Item 14, reports from council offices, 14.1, the Office of the Chief Executive, the ordinary reports, 14.1.1, the Chief Executive Officers' Action Report, November 2024. We'll take the report as read. Any questions for the CEO? Councillor Knox?
I've got a couple. First of all, on page 48, this meeting with Victoria Shute regarding native title claim. Can we elaborate on that a little bit?
Through the mayor, yes, we've received a letter from Crown Solicitors advising of a potential foreshadowed claim from the Bangla Determination Aboriginal Corporation in relation to native title lands. The nature of the letter that we've received from the Crown is indicating that there may be the need to furnish the state government with information dating back to the 1970s when the Racial Discrimination Act was proclaimed. We have sought some informal advice through Victoria Shute as a group of CEOs. However, the matter has now been referred to the LGA and the Mutual Liability Scheme and on behalf of all councils that are affected, noting that the Bangla Determination Area covers many councils. The LGA will be seeking advice from Mela Olsons regarding that matter to determine what future response, if any, council takes in relation to that foreshadowed claim. So I emphasise it's foreshadowed, it hasn't been lodged yet, but preemptively, the state government was looking to garner some support from councils in terms of preparing a potential response to a future claim.
Okay. The second one was on page 49, the Local Government Professionals Conference on Economic Development. I'm just wondering whether a report will be forthcoming on that because no doubt there's some interesting information that would be worthwhile sharing.
Certainly.
Thank you, CEO. No further questions. We have a recommendation. Council receives and notes the Chief Executive Officer's Action Report, November 2024. Councillor Border, moving. Councillor Knox, seconding. There's no further discussion. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Item 14.1.2, nomination for the Dog and Cat Management Board. Pardon me. Does anybody wish to nominate? We have two motions there that we either note the report under reference or we nominate someone that complies. Does anybody wish to move either way? Councillor Knox?
I'll move that we note the report under reference.
Thank you, councillor. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Border?
Seconding.
Thank you. There's no further discussion. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Item 14.1.3, the appointment of deputy mayor. As you would be aware, it is that time of the year where we have the appointment of the deputy mayor. There is a process to go through as far as a nomination. First of all, I will call for nominations. Deputy Mayor Pond?
Yes, nominating.
You are nominating? Thank you. Councillor Border?
Nominating.
You're nominating? Thank you. Are there any further nominations? If there are no further nominations, the process is a secret ballot, which is the normal process.
Just ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to afford the two candidates an opportunity to, say, speak for two minutes and talk to us about why they are applying for the deputy mayor position?
Certainly can, council. Start with the first one that put their hand up, Deputy Mayor Pond?
Thank you. I do believe that over the last couple of years, I've gained a lot of experience as the current deputy mayor. Especially just a week ago, I had the pleasure of stepping in to cover Mayor Stone while he was away for a week. I think this is a crucial time for us to have continuity and with the experience that I have, I think I'm definitely a good candidate. I think I work very hard in the community. I'm quite connected in many different organisations and lots of different sectors of the community. So my connections within the community and the information that I can bring to council is definitely very valuable. And I do work quite hard on keeping us working as a team. I've put a few get-togethers, organised those for us to get together and I'd be very honoured to keep continuing as deputy mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pond. Councillor Border?
Thank you very much for the opportunity, mayor. I'd just like to start by saying that being voted in as a councillor was a very humbling experience in my life and I feel it's a logical time in my civic duty journey to put myself forward for the leadership support role of deputy mayor. If elected, I'll support the mayor in his role and amplify as best I can the excellent work and leadership the mayor is already providing for our community. I'm clearly, two years in, I think it's obvious and I'm very passionate about getting out and helping communicate the great work that the council is already doing for our community. And as deputy mayor, I believe that my efforts would do even more good. I have the capacity and I have the willingness to continue to serve the community and I'm excited about the opportunity to further extend this service. So if it's the will of the council, I would also be humbled to accept the role of deputy mayor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you again to both of you for those presentations. We will now undertake the process.
So just confirming, based on the secret ballot, we have a tied vote. Consequently, there will be two names that go into a hat. The person whose name is called out of the hat first is excluded. So the last person's name that will be determined as the preferred candidate for the position.
Just out of interest, this process is in accordance with the policy?
Okay, so just for the benefit of the gallery in terms of what the process, so this is a secret ballot process, unlike a council decision where the mayor does have a casting vote. This is a secret ballot to determine who is to be nominated and supported by the council. As a secret ballot, we've done a count. The initial count was equal votes. So in accordance with the standing procedure, the first person that is then drawn out of the hat is excluded from the process. So effectively, it's the last man or last person standing. And I can confirm that based on that process, Councillor Border is to be put forward as the candidate for the position of deputy mayor.
Thank you, CEO. Therefore, we have a recommendation that council elect Councillor Border as the deputy mayor for a period of 12 months until the November 2025 ordinary council meeting. Councillor Knox?
So moving.
Do I have a seconder? Councillor Simpson, you're seconding? I'll put the motion, those in favour. Sorry, did somebody call for a division? What? Sorry? From the gallery, right. We'll start again with those, we've got the motion, those in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you. And I would acknowledge the efforts that Deputy Mayor, former Deputy Mayor Pond has put in with me and filled in admirably and congratulations to Councillor Border. Item 14.1.4, the 2024 annual community survey results. We have a recommendation. We'll take the report as read if anyone has any questions initially. Otherwise, we have a recommendation. Would somebody care to move that recommendation that we note the report and utilise the community's feedback to help shape its ongoing objectives as part of the financial year 2026 annual business plan and budget process? Councillor Westerman, you're moving?
Yeah.
Somebody care to second Deputy Mayor Border? Got to second twice now. There's no further comment. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. Item 14.1.5, the Northern Water Supply Project. We have a recommendation before I call for a mover. If there are any questions, I will refer those to the CEO. Otherwise?
Sorry.
Yes, Councillor Knox?
I don't think the letter is strong enough, to be truthful. We're asking that it supports further consideration of Malakwana. I think we need to go to the next level and we should be saying that council urges the state government to prioritise Malakwana in preference to Cape Harte. I just don't think it's strong enough otherwise. And I also think we need to make solid mention of the fact that we do have companies in Waila ready and close, in close proximity to work on such projects as well. So I think we need to emphasise that, but we just need a bit more strength in the letter.
Thank you, councillor. I'm quite sure we can take that on board certainly.
Through the mayor, essentially, the draft letter is there as a draft. It's the will of the council in terms of what message you want to convey and how you want to convey that to the state government. So if other elected members agree with that point of view, Councillor Knox, we can certainly change the wording to reflect something to that effect.
Thank you, Councillor Knox. Deputy Mayor Border?
I'd just like to add a bit of weight to that case as well, that I think the idea of putting a draft letter together and having it urging the state government for the reasons listed in the letter already.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Todd?
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate what Councillor Knox was saying about strongly wording the letter.
Thank you, council. It's more than happy to take that on board.
As a consequence, I'd suggest that some words be added to the recommendation before you, which is to express that sentiment. I've obviously heard it, but just for the purpose of the minutes. Deputy, Councillor Knox, if you wanted to add some suggestive words along the lines of what you put forward before?
I'll move it and I'll add the words urging after sight. After the word sight. Urging the state government to prioritise Malakwana in preference to Cape Harte.
Right, we now have a recommendation, as we've just heard. Councillor Knox? Councillor Simpson, seconding. If there's no further comment, you're happy with that motion, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against? Carry. Thank you. 14.1.6, the potential extension of the current dry zone. Before I seek a mover, I'll refer to the CEO. Is any further comment?
Through the mayor, thank you. No further comments per se. The purpose of the report is essentially to seek council's endorsement to start the process of looking at appropriate measures to be considered in relation to some of the antisocial behaviour and the associated perception regarding reduced public safety in and around, particularly the Westlands Shopping Centre precinct. I know there's been a feverish discussion about the dry zone. The dry zone is just one potential tool. It's not a perfect tool. So this recommendation looks to commence a process of looking at all of the relevant strategies that may be suitable to determine what should be progressed with a further report to be brought back to council in due course. Happy to respond to any questions. Noting that the mayor and myself and director Jarrett did meet with Saipole just recently and have commenced that discussion. But there's other stakeholders that would need to be involved with that consideration.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Knox?
Clutching my tongue firmly in my cheek, being a bit cheeky. There's a fair difference between homeliness and homelessness. One is about feeling warm and comfortable in the home. The other is not having a roof over your head. And unfortunately, the report refers to homeliness.
The author acknowledges that error. Thank you. Sorry, that was my intent, but not, not my fingers will put on the keyboard. Sorry about that.
And there are a couple of points. The other thing is that I wanted to mention, there's another party that's involved in all this and that's our local people, the bungalow people. I think that they've got a role to play in this and I think we should be approaching them as well and asking what assistance they could give or what advice they could give.
That's certainly the intention.
Yeah. Certainly, yes, we will do that. We have been doing some informal engagement with different stakeholders over a period of time. This is not something that's just happened literally last week or overnight. It has been growing for some time and I certainly have been engaging with a number of bungalow community members, including some of the current BIDAC board directors to just garner their personal views on the subject. And to your point, councillor Knox, I think local bungalow people certainly do have a role to play, noting for the benefit of everyone. So there's no doubt that most of the issues that we're experiencing with the cohort of individuals sitting adjacent to Westlands Shopping Centre are not locals. They're from country.
Deputy Mayor Border?
Two points that I had to raise. One was in the way the recommendation is worded now. Does that preclude the option of a town centre like that got in Port Augusta from being explored? Does that need to be added into that recommendation or is that going to be reviewed as well?
Through the mayor? No, the, I've only listed the civic, sorry, the dry zone just because there has been specific discussion about the dry zone as one of the tools. The reference to appropriate measures will look at all measures that are available, including a declared zone, as is the case in Port Augusta. From the initial conversations I've had, I don't believe that, one, there will be a sufficient need or demand for a town centre similar to Port Augusta. The issues that we've got here are not on the same scale as what Port Augusta is experiencing. And we've been advised that it's only the attorney general himself that can actually approve such a measure. And at this point in time, I doubt that that would likely to be considered by the attorney general. But having said that, all options will be on the table and we'll explore many options to work out what may have the best impact.
Thank you. And my second question is, I just wanted to query the time period that the police reports are being referred to. I've had a number of community members talk about this issue with me and I've suggested they just contact the police and make the report. And they've said repeatedly that they have, they have, they have. So I just wanted to query over what period of time the police have referred to in their responses to say that there hasn't, I think at some point they've said that there hasn't been an increase in the number of reports, but the community feedback would suggest that it possibly has.
Yeah, so the discussion we had was, was the start of the process and it was an informal discussion. So I didn't specifically say bring your evidence or your stats for this period of time and give us the numbers. Just in conversation, what Saipole indicated was that they hadn't seen a significant spike or increase in number of complaints being received in recent times. So in recent times to me would be maybe over the last month or two. That's not to say that things, issues are being reported. So, but certainly that's one of the key, key drivers for Saipole's resourcing. If they can clearly demonstrate evidence that there is a particular trend or a particular spike in issues that gives them some evidence or data to be able to lean back on to say that potentially additional resources may be required. But to date, they haven't seen something of that scale.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Pond?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you for saying, Justin. That is one of the tools in the kit. I was actually going to make that point. This is a step in the right direction, but it's not going to fix everything. And it definitely doesn't address all of the issues that were listed within the report, such as the high number of thefts and whatnot. But this is definitely a step in the right direction and I'd be happy to move it.
Thank you, councillor Pond. Councillor Knox?
Seconding.
We have a mover and a seconder. There's no further comment. I'll put that recommendation as a motion, those in favour?
There, I'm going to exclude myself.
And your reason for a conflict?
I'll work to save.
Thank you, councillor. You have a motion then? I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item fourteen point two, corporate services ordinary reports. Fourteen point two point one, the monthly budget report for October. We have a recommendation before I call for a mover. If there are any questions or comments, I presume we will redirect them to ground. Councillor Clubcar?
Just a question for the finance manager. On page 100, we have $1.8 million in overdue rates. So what actions are being taken to recover these, especially the older debts?
Thank you, through the chair. So a report came to council last month, just informing the council about the next steps for our section 184 process. So that's obviously dealing with our debts over three years and potential for sale of properties. So that process has begun in line with that council resolution. So it was about, sorry, off the top of my head, I think it was about 40 properties from that report that have received those letters or they're on their way if they haven't received them already. And that will should start to move some of the long overdue ones. Obviously, our, anything under three years is going through the normal debt collection process. So they'll get letters from our debt collector and work through that process. But the section 184 is obviously that last step to deal with properties that aren't making contact with council or, yeah, working on the debt in any way.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Border?
My question is in regard to the marina renewal and just in regards to consultation with users about the design of the new facilities. Is that something that we have done or at some point we will do? And how can users have their say about the design of the, any upgrades? Yeah, certainly. So in regards to the marina renewal, have there been any consultation with the users of the marina about the design of the new facilities? And how can users of the facilities have their say?
Are you?
Yeah.
Sorry. My apologies. I referred to the wrong director. Jags Ballantyne, are you able to respond to that question, please?
Yes, I can. There's been some early engagement with the most strategic stakeholders around the boat ramp extension. And as we get more firmer design plans, ready for delivery, we'll do a broader consultation and engagement process. Our first priority has been the marine and rescue safety people, the Whaler Boat Owners Association. But we can extend that and we'll be doing so to the broader community.
Thank you for that, Jo. Any further questions? If there are not, we have a recommendation that council receives and notes the monthly budget report. Deputy Mayor Border? Did he move? Moved. And seconded, councillor Campbell? Thank you for that. If there's no further comment, questions, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item fourteen point two point two, council member nomination to the audit and risk committee. This is a similar process. It may not be, but it could be a similar process to the deputy. We need to appoint, first of all, a council representative on the audit and risk committee. And then we also need to appoint two proxies. Do we have anybody nominating to be the main member of the audit and risk committee? Councillor Simpson?
Is councillor Clubcar happy to continue his role? If he is, I'll nominate councillor Clubcar.
Thank you. Do we have any? Deputy Mayor Pond?
Councillor Pond?
Sorry. Apologies, deputy mayor Border?
I would like to second the nomination of councillor Clubcar, if he's happy to continue. He's doing a great job.
Thank you. Well, we have a nomination. Are there any further nominations for the principal member? If not, we have the resolution there. Before I put that, we'll put it as a two-part. Do we have? Oh, sorry. And the length of time, say some guidance here, 12 months? Was that long?
Two years.
Two years? For two years?
This, for the benefit of completeness, we could put after two years concluding at the next periodic election.
And seeking two proxies, does anybody wish to nominate or be nominated as proxies? Councillor Campbell?
I would like to nominate.
Would somebody care to second councillor Campbell's nomination? Got names everywhere. Councillor Tom?
I'll second councillor Campbell's nomination.
Thank you.
I was also going to say that if no one else has any interest, I would continue as a proxy for the rest of our term.
I'll second that.
Yes. You want to deal with that?
Absolutely.
Yes. Be the same. If there are no further nominations and if everyone is happy with that, if there are no further nominations, no further comment, we have a recommendation as on the screen. I'll call for a mover of the motion. Somebody care to move? Councillor Inglis?
Been?
I knew that. Thank you. All right, councillor Inglis. We have the motion there. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you. Item fourteen point three, the city growth ordinary reports. Fourteen point three point one, Cuttlefest 2024. A report, quite an extensive report there, with quite a lot of data as well about the cuttlefish. Cuttlefest 2024. Does anybody? Councillor Knox?
Have a question.
Yes.
The sponsorships that we got, which are great and valued, are really in-kind sponsorships. I'm just wondering, do I actually physically go out and bang on doors of companies, et cetera, and request sponsorship for important events like this? We used to in the past.
I'll refer to Gail. I think you'll find that while it might be in kind, it's still at a cash cost to the supplier.
Yes, we do. So we make a list of any new businesses that have come to town and any other, anyone that comes across our interest. So we absolutely do. And we have received quite a lot of in-kind support in that way. So yes, thanks for that, councillor Knox.
Any further comments or questions? I do thank the authors for their very extensive report. We have a recommendation that council notes the Cuttlefest 2024 report. Councillor Knox?
Councillor Border was there first.
Deputy Mayor Border?
Sorry, deputy mayor Border.
Well, I'm sorry, but he's on the bottom of our list. We're going to have to change. All right. Moved. Deputy Mayor Border?
Yes, and can I just say, congratulations to the team on another fantastic season. Absolutely brilliant.
And seconded, councillor Knox? I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against? Carry. Thank you. Fourteen point three point two, the RV car park proposal. We have a two-part recommendation there. Councillor Border? Deputy Mayor Border? Sorry?
That's all good. Happy to move it. And I just wanted to ask a question about the camper van rally, which is referenced. The last one was 15 years ago in 2009. How do we get another one?
I can possibly, I can possibly answer that. They don't exist anymore.
All right. That'll make things very difficult.
Sorry? Well, not that organisation that used to travel. But certainly COVID put an end to it for a while. And back in the day, we would actually bid for it. And it was always accepted that once you got one, you were unlikely to get one soon after. My understanding was that they have dwindled away from what you might call the good old days. But Gail could possibly throw some more light on that. And in fact, it's because of that event that Waruna Bay have established what they have. Because going back to that time, they were providing a service, an ad hoc service to people as they were coming in. And it was so popular and they had so much follow-up that they then established the facility they've got out there. I didn't realise it was that long ago.
I'm with the mayor. I didn't realise it was that long ago till I had some input into the report because we were around and took part in it. Yeah, they don't exist in that, in that guise anymore, like that massive event. They do exist in smaller get-togethers with different, oh, okay, councillor.
I'll wait till you finish.
Okay. Well, that's what I've been led to believe. But the lead up to that was a year's worth of work. So we had to put a bid in. They came here, lived here for a year, worked with community and invested in all parts of the community. And I just wanted to note that we have had early conversations with the art gallery about reopening that space up and they're actually extremely keen because some of those people were around in the days where that was a RV park. And when it was removed, they, you know, they realised that there was actually a bit of a downturn in their business. So they're very excited to think that that might become a thing in the future.
Thank you. Councillor Knox?
First of all, I'll speak against the RV car park where it is. And I'm a regular motorhomeer. I personally wouldn't stay there for two reasons. One, the dust. Two, the noise from the trains. I would rather go to somewhere like the showgrounds, which is quite a common thing that happens in a lot of communities. They develop the showgrounds as an RV park. The body that runs the shows now, the only real change is that they used to be a motorhome club solidly. Now they're the caravan and motorhome club of Australia now. They still have their big get-togethers on an annual basis. They also have state ones on an annual basis as well, which are big as well. So there's plenty of that sort of stuff going on and they are essentially the same body, just they've added caravans. And their annual ones are big and the state ones are quite big as well. So they're still doing them. But my thoughts are that the showgrounds would be a far better place. The caravan and motorhome club of Australia as well is also establishing. The caravan and motorhome club of Australia as well is also establishing some little informal caravan parks. There's one in Port Perry and they actually have a volunteer caretaker there who gets to stay free on the site. But just for looking after the minimal facilities they've got there. So the club is still going and they're still having their annual get togethers in a big way.
Thank you councillor. I stand corrected. I read the report as it's just for short term parking, not to actually stay in. So that if, yeah. Thank you for that. councillor Pond?
I'm all for providing a facility for RV parking. I'm not for spending $55,000 of the community's money in developing the site. I think we need to be a little bit more careful with our money. We are an unsustainable financial council. I don't see the value in spending $55,000 of the community's money upgrading it. But happy to support it as a site for them to park on, but I'm against the money.
Again, as I read that, any expenditure wouldn't be into next year's budget, which the elected body of the day will be looking at. Yes, I don't read it as being spent right now, but thank you for your comment. councillor Todd?
Couple of things, if it's for parking, which is how I read the report, then I think that the town site is a really good option. I would be against the showgrounds as a site, Jubilee Park as a site, because I feel it would be, you're more likely to have people who would pull up, stay and then drive on. They wouldn't even come any further into town. So I think at least if they're in the town itself, they would have to at least drive through Whala on the way, the way out. I agree with councillor Pond around the spenditure, but if it's something that we're going to look at it, it's a different story. Yeah, I think there is value for money in investing in tourism. I'm just not sure we've got the money to spend right at this minute.
Thank you councillor. Certainly take those comments on board. councillor Simpson?
Yeah, I'd encourage the fact we have an allocation of a place to park these vehicles, but not at great expense to the council.
Thank you councillor. If there are no further comments or questions, we have a two part recommendation there. Would somebody care to move the two parts?
I'll move that.
Yep. Deputy Mayor, well now your name's disappeared completely. Deputy Mayor Border?
Moving.
You're moving. And councillor Inglis, you're seconding? There's no further comment. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. 14.3.3, the proposed three year partnership with Country Arts SA. Before I call for any movers, or we take it as read, refer it to the CEO if anybody has any questions?
Yeah, through the mayor, I might just get director of City Grove Jade Valentine to talk to this item because it references 50,000 per annum. But that's not a net amount. So I'll get Jade's first comment and then grant if there's any supplementary information needed. Over to you Jade.
Thanks Justin. Just to be clear, it's an extra 10,000 per annum on top of what our original commitment was. Administration supports this request for two significant reasons. We are approaching our regional precincts partnership grant to develop our central precinct in and around the Middleback Arts Theatre. This finance extra 10,000 per annum will also help to ensure we get more local Whala content into the programming that we've had and expand that local interaction we have with the Country Arts SA programmes. But just to be clear, it's an extra 10,000 that they are requesting.
Thank you councillor Knox.
Happy to move the recommendation. I believe it well worthy of our support.
Seconded Deputy Mayor Border?
Yes, and I did have one comment just in regards to the additional bed nights in Whala on page 180. Are they, is that extra income into the economy or is that somehow already factored in? I assume by reading it that that's a big bonus that there's extra beds as income into our economy based on this investment that we're making.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I just have one. Is that $50,000 already within the budget?
It is, the existing commitment is 40,000 per annum. So it's an extra 10,000 that they're requesting. We believe we can alter our other arts obligations and commitments and all the community funding programme to have a negligible effect on the budget to get that extra 10,000 per annum.
Thank you for that response. I think it is essential. It is not extra, but part of the existing budget. We have a recommendation that has been moved and seconded. There's no further questions or comment. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried. Thank you. Item 14.4, city infrastructure ordinary reports, there are nil. Item 15, information decision reports, 15.1, council members. Oh, sorry. It's on the screen there. Yeah. The late item, thank you for all being observed. 14.3.4, to exclude the industrial estate land division parcels from community land. We have a recommendation. councillor Knox?
Who is?
Somebody wish to second it? councillor Simpson?
Seconded.
Yes. If there's no further questions or comments, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Right, moving on to 15.1.1 from the mayor, the list of engagements. Pardon me, I won't go into any further explanation unless anybody's got a question. In that case, no questions. We have a recommendation that council receives and notes the mayor's list of engagements. councillor Campbell? Moving. And councillor Todd, seconding? There's no further question or comment. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carried. And perhaps I should just add, since that was prepared today, it's been quite hectic with the media, particularly ABC radio, wanting comments to do with zero petroleum. And there's more to come. Item 15.2, corporate services city growth, 15.2.1, the monthly information report, November 2024. Or take the report as read, another very detailed report of activities as what has been happening. Does anybody have any questions or comments relating to that to refer councillor Knox?
Digitising the council agendas, does that include the minutes as well?
Yes.
And if so, once that's done, will we be able to search using a keyword? For example, if you want to look up the jetty, can you just put jetty in and it brings up the resolutions covering the jetty and the reports?
The mod, yes, it does.
Excellent. Okay. The next one is, the graphs start on page 205 and statistics are great. I love statistics. But these sort of things are seasonal and we're not comparing apples with apples. For example, we can't compare October this year with October last year. So we need to keep 12 months in the loop when we're putting these things out. Because they are seasonal. We want to look at how many are coming to the Maritime Museum in October, want to compare it with the previous October. So if we can just think in terms of 12 months, would be so much more useful. On page 212, there's the NADOC week. And I'm just wondering, are there any other contributions besides council going into NADOC week? Is there any other sponsorships?
As the chairperson of NADOC? Yes, there are.
Thank you.
You might need to let you know who those sponsors are or? Yep. So we have Santos, GFG, Golding, and this year for the first time, the Officer Hydrogen.
Thank you. The other one, there's two others, page 213, the Carnacross. That's the most under promoted event that we have. And I reckon it's a really great, exciting event. And you know, we just wish we could give it more promotion and get people to attend it. I've only been once and it was great. Let's have the chance to go again, but fantastic event when I was there. So I think it's something we could promote. And lastly.
Can I just put a response to that? The only time I have ever, ever seen any information is about the day before. May I suggest that if it's, if it requires us to, that the organisation be contacted to actually advise us?
The report makes some mention of the fact, and I'll cut into the exact wording, that they were aware of it beforehand and had been doing, had been having some discussions. Because they needed to put approvals and things in place.
I don't know that they speak with the right people to bring it as an event.
I did raise this last time around and I do, I'll repeat it. It's a great, exciting event. There are some great cars there. They make wonderful noises. If you're a petrolhead, some of us are, but I just think it's something we can get behind and make something out of it.
Certainly noted councillor Knox.
The other one is the Tom Curtin event that's coming up. Is council in any way sponsoring that or are we just promoting it?
Jade, are you able to respond to that question?
Just repeat the question for me?
The Tom Curtin event that's coming up shortly, are we sponsoring it in any way or just promoting it?
I'll have to take that on notice unless Gail has any more information.
I've just returned from leave councillor Knox. So I'm sorry if I haven't got all the information, but I believe that we are just promoting it. We have, I believe Tammy is aware because it's being held out at the showgrounds. So I feel like we've been the conduit and permitting and being a relationship maker with Tammy and the event delivery people.
Yeah, they are funding it themselves. It was just, they initially rang me because it's at the showgrounds. They thought that the Whala show is in charge of everything out there. And then I have passed them on to council. So council are just helping with permitting and advertising.
councillor Simpson?
Yes, under the regulatory services report, we have a report of 14 complaints about unsightly properties in Whala. The response is deemed that one of the 14 are unsightly. Whoever's through those places aren't looking. But I can't see how you have 14 complaints about unsightly properties in this town and only one's deemed as being not good. But I don't know what plan they're working on, or what they're doing, but we've got, I can tell you they have it as of now, that are unsightly.
Yes, thank you. Through the mayor, the regulatory services team look at the complaints and the unsightly properties that come through against the regulatory framework of the, of the legislation and make assessments on that basis. Often times that assessment from a regulatory point of view is not, I guess, there is a higher, there is a higher threshold for unsightly properties to be deemed unsightly than what perhaps you or I might think is unsightly. I'll take your question on notice and look further into those 14 complaints and have a look. One of the plans that we are looking to do as part of the city amenity project is to bring back into council what the framework is for assessment of unsightly properties so that we all have a common understanding as to what an unsightly property is in accordance with the legislation. And so that we can then start setting some of those boundaries in, in, in position. And the assessment framework then that the regulatory services team uses can be based on feedback also from council members.
There you go. That would be great to have a look at that legislation because obviously Wood is 1912 or something, I think.
I fully recognise that.
Thank you councillor, Deputy Mayor Border?
Just in regards to the Carnacross, I attended and I think that that's an insurance issue, which is why they can't openly promote it. I think there's a requirement to not openly promote it. So there's something around that, around that that wouldn't, they wouldn't want it to be wildly publicised as much as they want some people there enjoying it. But my question specifically was about the shopping trolleys. They continue to be reported. The report says, is that number dropping? Since there's a new contractor that's been engaged, is there improvement in city amenity with less shopping trolleys being reported?
Anecdotally, yes. I haven't seen the statistics to be able to advise absolutely that there has been a drop, but anecdotally, yes.
councillor Inglis?
Further councillor Simpson's views on unsightly properties, I would actually like to see senior members of administration go to the regulatory offices and have a look for themselves because I've had a drive around, obviously you know, I've got nothing to do myself at present. And there's some properties out there that are absolutely disgraceful. And if anybody thinks that they're okay, I'd be questioning their judgment. So I think that I would like to see senior members of the administration go for a look themselves because I wouldn't be happy living within 10 houses, some of these properties.
Yeah, or next door, yeah.
Never mind next door or across the road. So there needs to be a little bit more rigour put around that process. And I understand there's framework to work in, but there's got to be better judgment calls. If there's only one, I would question the judgment call of the person making it.
Thank you. I'll take that on notice.
Thank you councillor, definitely will. councillor Todd?
Mine was just a comment with regards to Deputy Mayor Border's comment around the shopping trolleys. I live in the old Woolies area and the shopping trolleys in our area are rife. And they are certainly moving a lot quicker than they used to do.
Thank you councillor. Right, we have a four part recommendation that we note what we've just received. Would somebody care to move Deputy Mayor Border?
Moving.
councillor Knox? Seconded. There's no further questions or comment. I'll put that motion, those in favour, against, carried. Thank you. Item 16, notices of motion, we have none. Item 17, questions on notice, we have none. Item 18, questions without notice. Do we have any questions without notice? councillor Campbell?
Yes, I'm hoping this is the right time to bring it up. I've had a member of the public contact me about a house with numerous cats. Whala Nori area, they were just wondering, apparently RSPCA have been contacted and they they're wondering if council has something they can do to help because the animals are actually taking over the tree.
Through the mayor, that would be something that should be raised with the customer service people and it will be tasked accordingly. It's very much an administrative operational matter.
Thank you. The resident said that she actually has raised it because I got the same phone call. She said that she has raised it through customer service here and also through RSPCA.
For a matter of that nature, see the director offline. It's very much an administrative operational matter.
councillor Knox?
Yes, I've got a couple. We were going to get a report on the cleaning of the jetty piles that we undertook and perhaps it was suggested that we didn't do that, we shouldn't, shouldn't have done it. We were promised to report on that. This has been going on for a few months now. You still haven't seen the report.
Director or manager wish to provide an update? Danger of operations?
councillor, yes. So in that case, we've been waiting for more information to come back from the engineers at this point in time. But apologies, we just need to chase it up and get a rig along with it.
Get a report to the next meeting. Okay. The other one is just a quick thing. Australia Day celebrations, what are we referring to those as now? Are we using the word Australia Day? Yeah?
We've never changed it.
Question to administration, are we using Australia Day or are we referring to them as something else?
So, Australia Day picnic?
Yes, I think, I don't think we've changed anything. I think we've still referring to Australia Day as in the celebration of the acknowledgement, but we talk about a community, a community, sorry.
as in the celebration of the acknowledgement, but we talk about a community, a community, sorry, community get-together. So a community, it's not a picnic. But I don't think we've actually changed anything the way we describe it. Have you, is there anything you'd like us to follow up?
Well, I'll keep an eye on it.
Comment, can I make a comment? Maybe first if I may, sorry. This subject has come up recently. I was just quickly trying to put my hands on that email. So the community celebration event is called the Australia Day picnic and has been called that for the last couple of years. And that's what it's proposed to be called again for the coming year. That's for the picnic, that's the community celebration on Australia Day. And then separate to that, we have the Australia Day citizenship ceremony and, and awards.
Councillor Inglis.
I've got a couple of things. I know this bit of road, these two bits of road aren't our problem, but between Falls Bay and Cutterfish Drive along the coast, I was driving down there today. That's not going to be too long. That road's going to be impassable to anything but a four-wheel drive. Pretty rough, very rough, obviously. And there's a couple of big mud holes there that you know, you've got to drive the side push to get around, which is not ideal. And the Santos escape road, I don't know, we were going to write to somebody about that. There's nothing. And I understand that those two bits of road aren't our problem, but there needs to be a bit more urgency put in having those things repaired. Especially coming into holiday season, there's going to be people wanting to camp and caravan and do whatever. But they're both pretty rugged. And the only other thing I've got is some delightful souls decided the catching a squid and wafting all over the seats down on the jetty would be a good idea. So we might need to get those seats cleaned off because it's been on site with squid in. I don't understand what drives some people, but I thought catching squid and getting it and wafting all over the seats on the jetty would be a good idea. There's talks for even down there, but pretty ordinary.
Thank you. In terms of the information in relation to the jetty, we'll arrange and get that cleaned. Not a problem. In terms of the escape route and discussions with Santos, Justin or the chief executive and I met with a representative from Santos. It's a couple of months ago now and raised the escape route and the requirements in terms of it needing to be graded and, and fixed. She was taking that back to others within Santos to have an internal discussion. We have tracked back in terms of the previous arrangements with council receiving funding from Santos to undertake the maintenance work on that particular road. And that actually ceased a number of years ago and so it has been quite some time since it's been touched. We'll follow up with Santos again this week to see where that's at with them. You know, we're very happy to take on again the, the grading of that road, providing that we actually get the necessary funds from Santos in order to be able to do it. So we'll take that up and follow it up again this week.
That's good. I would have a very good look at what the cost of fixing that road is before we agreed to doing it because that is going to take some serious money to fix that road up.
It would have to be fully funded by Santos, certainly no funding from council whatsoever.
Can I just add to that mayor? So we did get a response after that meeting. No, no, you don't have to apologize. It's me because I haven't shared it with you. Confirming that Santos has no operational requirements for this road moving forward. So they've got no interest in contributing or using that road as an escape road anymore.
So given, given that response, absolutely what we will need to do now is to have a look in terms of access to that road so that we can ensure that safety is maintained in the area. So we'll take that one on board.
Thank you for the question. Thank you for the response. Any further questions without notice? No further questions? Mr Antonio, is that your phone all night? Somebody has a phone that's been going off all night. Now, nineteen, motions without notice. Do we have any motions without notice? In other words, at this note, there are no motions without notice. Item twenty is consideration of confidential items. So would somebody care to move that we go into confidence? No. Now, there are reasons why we do need to keep moving on, which I'll allude to. Move councillor Westerman. Somebody care, councillor Simpson seconded. That we go into confidence. We will just take a short sixty seconds while we get ready for confidence. Thank you. Thank you. We have meeting dates there. Only one thing other, and I do thank you sincerely for all your deliberations tonight, some difficult issues. And with the time now at eight minutes to eight, I'll declare the meeting closed. And thank you very much and have some more supper before you go.